Life happens. Now I can focus on my school work.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your attendance at the School Board meeting, Monday, September 23rd, 2019. All board members are in attendance. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call for approval of the agenda, please.
Some move?
Second, if all are in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thank you. First thing we're going to do is introduce our student school board reps for the year 2019-2020, and I'd like to call upon Tom Bennett to table it.
Alright, okay, so this is, I believe, year four that we've had student reps on on the school board. And for those of you in the audience who are watching at home that don't really know what the school board reps or the student school board reps do, I just wanted to explain it real quick. So, we started this a couple years ago because we wanted to hear the student voice, and we wanted to have student school board members at the table so they can ask questions and speak to how policies and decisions impact students. So, we call them student reps because they have all the same privileges that we board members do, except for one tiny little thing: they're not allowed to vote. Because to vote, you have to be elected by the residents of Bloomington. So, we've had them on, this is, like I said, the fourth year, and we love having them on there. They're also the co-chairs of the Board Student Advisory Council, so they have another group of students made up from students from Kennedy and Jefferson, and they talk about different issues, and they had a meeting this evening, which I'm sure they'll go over in their reports. So, this year, we have two, one from Kennedy, one from Jefferson, and we have returning from Kennedy. We have a senior, who's Ally Starks, and then we also have a new one who's also a senior but from Jefferson, Shante Brown. So, if you guys would like to take a minute to introduce yourselves real quick, we'll start with the seasoned pro over there.
Hi, so most of you guys know me. I'm Ally Starks. I'm just really excited to be here, honestly. We have a myriad of cultures that walk our halls at Kennedy, and I'm trying my best every day to make sure that I'm hearing those voices, that I'm representing those voices. I understand my privilege as a white woman, and understanding that I am not the majority at Kennedy, so I'm working tirelessly to make sure that I'm representing everyone at Kennedy. And I'm just excited to make things happen. I'm ready to ask questions. I'm ready to talk to the public, talk to our schools, talk to superintendent, talk to the board about how we can make our amazing schools even better, and how we can, as One Bloomington, make this place the best it can possibly be. So, thank you.
I don't know if I'm gonna follow that, so I'm gonna break out my script real quick. First of all, I want to say that I'm really honored and very grateful for this position. Again, I'm Shante Brown, and I'm a senior at Jefferson. I'm also one of the heads of the Student Council, president of the GSA, and an active member of the Prom Committee. And when dealing with these communities, I'd heavily involve unity, getting people together. You could say I'm more than passionate, dedicated, proactive, outspoken, and, most importantly, very ambitious. And now that I've been appointed and honored by this position, I'm hoping I can show you guys just that, and show you through my new and hopefully innovative ideas, and show you guys the aspirations that I have for both Jefferson and Kennedy, because you'd be surprised what we both can do as One Bloomington. Thank you.
So now, I'd like to invite our District Council, David Holman, to administer the oath of office to Shante.
Somebody's gotta take a picture of this.
Shante, would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me?
Yes, sir.
I, Shante Brown.
I, Shante Brown.
Affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
The duties of the student representative.
The duties of the student representative.
To the school board of...
To the school board of...
Independent School District 271.
Independent School District 271.
Bloomington Public Schools.
Bloomington Public Schools.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, they stopped teaching cursive in my grade. That'll be one of our first items for discussion. Alright, next we have a proclamation regarding Indigenous Peoples' Day. Would someone like to read that proclamation? One of the board members? Like to read that proclamation?
Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
It results that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the attached proclamation declaring Monday, October 14th, 2019, as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the Bloomington Public Schools.
Begin.
Thank you. I will now read the proclamation. Whereas the land now known as the State of Minnesota has been home to Indigenous peoples since time immemorial, and without whom the building of this state would not have been possible. And whereas Indigenous peoples have made essential contributions to the landscape of Minnesota, including traditional knowledge, experience, labor, technology, science, philosophy, industry, arts, as well as their cultural belief system that stipulates Indigenous people as protectors and stewards of our natural environment for the benefit of all. And whereas Independent School District 271 joins a growing number of government entities across the country that have recognized the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day in order to promote appreciation, tolerance, reconciliation, understanding, friendship, and continued partnerships among all of its people and the Indigenous people of this land. Now therefore, we, the Bloomington School Board, hereby proclaim Monday, October 14th, 2019, to be Indigenous Peoples' Day in the Bloomington Public Schools. We encourage all staff, students, families, and residents to join in celebrating the collective ingenuity, creativity, cultures, and traditions of Indigenous peoples, and to continue honoring the contributions of Indigenous peoples throughout the year. Is there any discussion on this proclamation? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Now, I will invite Dr. Jenna Mitchler, Assistant Superintendent, to introduce Heidi Hecker, who will receive the proclamation.
Thank you, Chair Bartolata. Thank you, Board of Directors, Superintendent Fujitaki, community. So with me tonight is Heidi Hecker. She is our coordinator for American Indian Programs, and she'll be saying a few words about the proclamation.
I just would like to express gratitude and appreciation for the school board. This is the third year this proclamation has been in place and accepted, and on behalf of the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee and the American Indian Education Program, thank you very much. And we look forward to working in partnership with, actually making sure some of these contributions discussed find their way into the classrooms and to the curriculum. Thanks.
Alright, now we have reports by the student reps to the school board.
That's all you.
You wanna go first, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess. Alright, first of all, I want to say we have seven National Merit semifinalists this year. That includes Kaitlyn Brandwick, Jelaine Clark, Holden Longley, Chris Melville, Kayla Nguyen, Charles Wiseman, and Henry Wiseman. Next thing is, our homecoming is actually this week, this Saturday. So, game's on this Friday, and we actually just crowned our king and queen. Our king is Zach Farah, and our queen is Paige Thompson. Former hockey coach and current social studies teacher Jeff Lindquist is being inducted into the Minnesota Hockey Coaches Association Hall of Fame. Sports are in full swing, by the way. And the first theater performance of the year will start the weekend of October 4th with Dinosaurs Before Dark. All you chief.
Okay, so I'd like to start off with recognizing also our National Merit semifinalists. So, we have Ingrid Anderson, Wyatt Dotman, and Jordan Thompson, all amazing scholars that I know well. Our Kennedy Community Alliance was awarded the Prodigy Award from the Bloomington Education Foundation, something that we're really proud of. Apology, this is not chronologically organized, so bear with me here. So, the Fall Sports Kickoff was August 23rd, where we gathered to celebrate the beginning of all the sports, and we, like, announced every name. Super fun. And we had a little cookout with all of our athletes beforehand. Kennedy, big game. We beat Richfield in football, 41 to 28. Our student section was in full swing, and we were trucking all the way, which was our favorite cheer. We have homecoming next week. We have some super fun days. We have pajama day, class color day, jersey day, twin day, and my favorite, blue and gold day. And our football game will be that Friday with our dance afterwards. Super excited for that. And like Tom mentioned, we had our first Board Student Advisory Council meeting that I was super happy to co-lead with Shante. So, it was met with a lot of excitement, a lot of passion for the work that we have in front of us in our schools, and we have so many profoundly intelligent students in that room, and we're all ready to make a difference in our school cultures and in our schools in general. So, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, both of you. So, tonight, we have people who wish to address the board. We will take public comment from Bloomington residents, parents, staff, and students, and only those individuals who've signed up to address the board. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. Each speaker should identify themselves with their name and address or as an employee for maintaining proper order and for adherence to the time limits. The rights of employees are protected, and therefore, comments regarding the reputation of any person connected with the district will not be heard by the board while sitting in public session. As a matter of general practice, the board will take questions and comments under advisement and issue responses after deliberation. Administration has provided responses to people who have called or emailed the district, board, and others regarding the topics likely to be shared during this public comment period. So, we will begin with Eric Van Brocklin.
Alright, good evening. My name is Eric Van Brocklin, Bloomington resident, 6101 West 98th Street. First, I want to thank the school board members who have an extremely difficult job for the students, do us an extremely difficult job for our students and families in the Bloomington School, so thank you for that. Next, I'd like to thank Mr. Fujitaki, Mr. Nyberg, and Vice Chairman Berkstrom for taking time to listen, discuss, and read concerns related to the Jefferson High School volleyball program. With that said, I'm here to express concerns in regards to an $8,250 investigation that was conducted by the district as it relates to the Jefferson High School volleyball program. In my opinion, this investigation was incomplete and did not include many players and families who had direct concerns with the program. Some of these concerns have been shared with the board through written correspondence. At the completion of this investigation, it was presented to certain families within the program that the concerns found in the investigation would be addressed during a spring parent meeting, which was attended by Mr. Nyberg. I attended this meeting, and no such information was presented. As part of the written correspondence with board members and district administration, there has been other district policies and possible Minnesota State High School violations within the program. I asked the board to consider all concerns for those students and families who are not part of this investigation so as to have a full picture of why it was conducted in the first place. As was discussed in the spring parent volleyball meeting, the annual budget for the Jefferson volleyball program is less than $800. Instead of spending over 10 years' worth of money on an incomplete investigation, that money could have helped to save players and families' time and effort in fundraising. Better yet, I would suggest that you find a way to make mental health and positive coaching training a mandatory requirement for all coaches in your district. This $8,250 bill to investigate program concerns may have been avoided. Head coach has been trained in how to treat young female athletes. Thank you.
Next, I'd invite Earl MacArthur to the podium.
Thanks. I appreciate the chance to speak to the school board. So, you've all received an email from me either last night or this morning, and I'm here to talk about just a few of the points within that email. So, the reason I'm here to speak tonight is, I do not feel that the school administration is following its policy in addressing a complaint of retaliation by the varsity volleyball coach against my daughter that was given several weeks ago to the school administration. Like I said, everyone has received a copy of that, so you've got the details. But for some context in this meeting, last year, we made a complaint, my wife and I, to the coach, telling our daughter, or telling the principal and the assistant superintendent that we felt unfair things had been said to our daughter at the tournament. Those unfair things were specifically, quote, "She added nothing to the team and had no value on the court." She basically walked out of that conversation, that one-on-one conversation with the coach, feeling devastated and worthless, at least in the eyes of the coach. And I came home that weekend, and she was in her bedroom crying the entire week. After some additional complaints, there was an investigation, like Erica just mentioned, last year, which concluded with the assistant superintendent and athletic director contacting us and saying that the contract for that coach was going to be renewed, but indicated there would be some contingencies, that there would be an improvement plan and some monitoring. Specifically, we were concerned about retaliation in this year. So, that brings us to this year. Three weeks into the season, I made the complaint of retaliation to the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and the principal. It took five days. I had three emails, and then five days later, before I got a response, and I believe school policy is 24 hours. Basically, we've had a couple of interactions with the athletic director since then, but the response we've got back is basically, appropriate action is being taken, which, honestly, based on past experience, it's hard to say what appropriate action is because we haven't been able to see any change in the past when appropriate action was taken. So, I have three requests to the school board, which are included in the email. One was that you review the complaint of retaliation and how it was handled by the school administration. Two, that you would review the history of complaints about this coach and the responses the administration's taken over time. And three, investigate how administrators are held accountable for implementing, quote, "appropriate action," because honestly, appropriate action kind of comes across as you getting blown off. I appreciate your time. Thank you for listening to me and receiving the emails.
Alright, this will go off sooner or later.
What can I go up where the tablet light?
Can tell I don't use these timers very often.
Okay, next up is Adam Heisman.
Alright, hi, Chair Bartolata, school board members, superintendent cabinet, and listening audience. My name's Adam Heisman. Taught in the district since January 2000. Went on Operation Adventure as a eighth grader, all through college, and then I've been doing it now for 20 years as a staff chaperone. And I'm just here to bring out the fact that the end of this program has been extremely disappointing in how it's been handled by the district. We met with Assistant Superintendent Mitchler this summer, stating that it would be done due to safety concerns. She did not have any specifics, and we didn't really expect her to, as she was fairly new on the job. As the leaders of the program requested a meeting with the cabinet via email, and we were not responded to on this email, just to sit down and get some specifics. And that did not happen, which was frustrating. We got a letter then from the lawyer stating that an insurance back and forth that happened in the spring between Todd Anderson, who's a teacher on the program, a leader, and Assistant Superintendent Eric Melby at the time. And from there, also at the meeting, we were told that we'd be helped to look for other avenues to keep this program going, whether it was the city of Bloomington or some other ways, starting up an LLC. Shortly after that, we discovered all of our gear was missing at Olson, and we had a lot of gear in there that was teachers' private stuff and also Olson Middle School science material. When we asked for some clarification on this, we were told that the stuff was going to be put up for auction, and that if we wanted our personal stuff back, we would need to provide receipts proving that we owned this ourselves. And a lot of the gear was 5, 10, 15, even 25 years old. So, of course, we did not have receipts for this. And that upset a lot of teachers in the district too, because they have a lot of materials in their classrooms that they don't have receipts for, that they have purchased and brought to their rooms to improve their teaching. Going forward with that, we eventually got some pressure from parents, and this then led to us being told we could reclaim our materials for this trip. So, that's supposed to happen next week. The next frustrating piece of this is some of the emails that have been sent out by the district to the parents and former students who've been on this trip, questioning why this trip has been canceled. And there's a lot of untruths in the emails, things that say we were, let's see here, that discussed safety risks and issues with our staff repeatedly over the past few years. Administration's received information evaluations regarding incidents that are deeply concerning and posed foreseeable harm to students and chaperones, and that these were shared with the program leaders. This never occurred. We've never sat down and had a meeting. The only time we were told something of safety, again, Assistant Superintendent Melby at the time, two years ago, asked us to provide lifeguards on the trip, which we did. Mr. Swartow, Mr. Nicky got certified. So, sorry for going over with the time. I've got a lot I could go into, but it's just been really frustrating how this whole thing has ended. So, thank you. Thank you, Chairman, Board, Cabinet, visitors. For those of you who don't know, Operation Adventure is an outdoor program that's been going for 51 years here in Bloomington. It's turned into a middle school, primarily a middle school program with some high schoolers involved. And, you know, 24 years ago, when I first started teaching in Bloomington, there was a big emphasis on outdoor education, and that came from the state. And Bloomington Public Schools did a great job of it, and there were tons of outdoor education classes that were taught by Tom Thomas and Roger White, and that's just a little history about it. But Operation Adventure is an extension of that enthusiasm, and Dick Anderson and Larry Tomford started it 51 years ago. And since then, classroom instruction has gone towards a stem of science, technology, engineering, math, which is great, but that doesn't, that does not decrease the importance of outdoor programs. And for Bloomington Public Schools to make a decision to discontinue the program on the basis of fear of litigation, I think, rather than what's best for kids, is unsettling. Yes, we want to keep all our students safe, and, you know, if I could wrap my kids a bubble ramp, I would, but we would have to discontinue other programs like swimming and diving, football, soccer, certainly gymnastics. Falls and crashes are part of their sport, you know, even kid safari, there's some inherent dangers there. But O.A. has never had a major safety incident. We have not been told of any safety concerns from the cabinet or principals. It is safe enough that former principals in the district sent their own son on the trip twice. And current administrators have taken their families on some of the same activities that we do on Operation Adventure. We were sent a letter that they had insurance concerns in the event of an unfortunate event occurred during the program. Well, we haven't had any unfortunate events, and, you know, an unfortunate event might be a kid dying of heat stroke on a football field, or a Jake Jablonski, heaven forbid. But we have not had any unfortunate instances on Operation Adventure that I know of in my 24 years of going on the trip. I don't want to waste any more time, but I would like to request more time to meet with the school board and cabinet that would give us some definite reasons that we could continue this program or something that we could change that would make it safer for our children and students. We would love to hear their input, and any ways we can make it safer and continue the program. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to address the board on something other than those two topics this evening that's not on the agenda? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on with our meeting. Thank you. Would someone like to move Part A of the agenda?
Some move?
Thank you. Part A includes our personnel, minutes, field trips, contracts, and agreements, and finances. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Thank you. Brings us to Part B. An American Indian Parent Advisory Committee update, and I'd invite Jenna Mitchler, Heidi Hecker, and Rachel Jens to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. So, tonight, I have with me presenting an update for us on the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee's recommendations at the close of last school year. Heidi Hecker, who I introduced earlier, but our program of, I'm sorry, our program coordinator for American Indian programming, and then Rachel Jens, who's our Director of Curriculum and Instruction. So, with that, I'll hand it over to you both.
Okay, so I will refresh your memory of the recommendations that were made last year. I'm not really sure how to advance this. Alright. So, we had three, and we're gonna look at two of them tonight. First one was to make certain that Minnesota State academic standards, which include contributions of Minnesota State tribal communities, are being taught at each grade level and content area in accordance with Minnesota State statutes. And two, to provide district staff with culturally relevant training specific to Dakota and Ojibwe tribal communities of Minnesota. And the second one actually complements the first one, as we discussed last year. It's difficult to teach what you don't know.
Alright, the curriculum instruction team started by doing a comprehensive review of the benchmarks that are related to the contributions of American Indian tribes and communities. There are very specific benchmarks in several academic content areas and at various grade levels, and so our first task was to look at those benchmarks and ensure that they were tied to courses at the elementary, middle, and high school level. And so, you can see at the elementary level, those benchmarks occur in grade one music, in second grade in both English Language Arts and Social Studies, in fourth grade in those two subjects as well, and in fifth grade, Social Studies. We also have relatively new benchmarks in science. Our state standards in science were reviewed by the state during the previous school year. Our state standards in science were reviewed by the state during the previous school year, and we're starting our review this year. There are additional benchmarks that are currently being placed into those science In middle school, we've got benchmarks addressing the American Indian tribes and communities in sixth grade in multiple subject areas, English Language Arts, Social Studies, and all of our music programs, and our visual arts course as well. And then in seventh grade, in English Language Arts and Social Studies, and eighth grade, English Language Arts as well. And again, science is under review. And at the high school level, you'll see those benchmarks addressed at all grade levels as well, primarily in the humanities areas, in combinations of English courses, as well as our various social studies courses. They're also in our Theater Arts Program, which is under review this year, and our science program. One of the keys that we found to ensuring that those benchmarks that are in our curriculum are actually addressed in our courses is professional development for our teachers. So, we started last year working with Heidi and her program by providing an introduction to understanding the arts of American Indian communities to our elementary visual art and music specialists. We're continuing that work this year with two more specific sessions, one for our visual arts specialist at the elementary level and one for our music specialists. We're also starting to move into the secondary level and are offering some professional development for our visual arts specialists in the middle school and high school. We're also working with Heidi's program to develop some potential breakout sessions that would be geared for all teachers, not just our arts specialists, on our two professional development days this year, November 25th and March 9th. Some additional action steps. We are working in collaboration with our principals and other building leaders so that they can offer support to teachers in understanding and making sure that they are teaching those benchmarks using district-provided materials and resources, and where additional resources are needed, working with those teachers to review materials and purchase them as needed. Dr. Mitchler and I will be attending this year the National Indian Education Association Conference and consulting with Dr. Heather Mueller, who is the Assistant Commissioner at MDE, to learn more about what other districts and other local organizations are doing to address this issue as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
First of all, let me say thank you for coming. It's always nice to see you. Heidi, well, it goes for everyone. We tend only to see you maybe once a year, and you're invited and you're welcome to be here anytime you like. So, we always like when people come. We like to listen and learn. Can I ask, Heidi, are you serving as a spokesperson for AIPAC tonight? Do you have, if I ask an opinion about, from AIPAC, are you able to answer?
I don't think yet, because they're just seeing these, this presentation for the first time tonight. I'm not here to serve as a spokesperson, but as a team member with finding, problem-solving, and finding solutions.
Sure. So, then I'll rephrase the question and just ask, as a team member, the steps that were outlined tonight, do you, do you see positive progress in them?
I do. I do see there's been, since these recommendations were put forth, I saw immediate efforts to try to figure out, how can we improve? What do we need to provide for our teachers? I know Rachel has worked tirelessly on trying to find PD, and which isn't always easy to find the right people for the right dates, but I know that she's worked at it, and I think we, she's found some really good resources. So, it's moving in the, I feel it's moving in the right direction and appreciate the efforts that have been made.
Good. That's good to hear, from one board member. I'm sure my colleagues agree, but I appreciate that, and it's nice to know that things are moving forward. And as always, you're welcome to come.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's interesting to note on some of the additional action steps that I was at a couple of events last year where there were other coordinators from the American Indian communities around, even one from Wisconsin and South Washington. You know, as I casually ask, you know, how are things going, or whatever it is, Heidi, do you meet with them on a regular sometime basis to share some of their programs and what we're all doing to try to help?
Are you talking about other districts, Indian education programs?
Right.
Yeah, we meet a few times a year, and we get together, we brainstorm, we share ideas, resources. We're also attending, Indian Ed staff is also attending the National Indian Education Convention, which happens to be in Minneapolis this year, as well as the MIEA, which is the Minnesota Indian Education Association Conference, which is in November. So, we try to be as connected as possible to other programs and districts as to what they're doing, as well as conferencing with the MDE Indian Education Program and consultation with them.
I think I shared with you maybe the board one time, when I went up to Bemidji, to the Red Lake Reservation, to see their improvements in their schools and some of the, some of the programs and some of the structure that they're doing with Ojibwe. It's just remarkable, and so by them doing that, you know, and I don't know how much of it would trickle down or be shared, but it's certainly worthwhile.
So, first of all, I'd like to say thank you for all the effort that you have put into getting to where we are right now. You know, I've been on the board for eight years, and I would say that this is exciting. You know, it's something that, it has taken a while, but now we're there. We're taking the necessary steps to make sure that we are helping all of our students and including more and more groups of students. So, definitely, you know, takes time. You know, there are some things that really take time for us to figure out, but definitely good news for Bloomington schools and for our American Indian students. It is definitely hard for a person to be successful, you know, if you are not connected to your own identity. So, I think it is definitely very important that our students get to have, you know, this type of information included in the curriculum where they can really connect with themselves, to really discover who they are, because only when you really know who you are, then you feel like you belong to the community where you are living. And many of us don't even know about the history of Bloomington itself, you know, of the people who were in Bloomington several years ago. You are right when you say, Heidi, that it is difficult to teach what you don't know, so this professional development, it's very relevant, very important. And the continuous work that we keep doing about cultural competence, you know, that we're including not only our students of color, but our American Indian students as well. One comment that I would like to make, and I apologize if it doesn't seem like it's relevant, because we're not exactly talking about our students who come from Latin American countries, but when it also, when it is associated with indigenous groups, you know, it is also important to include communities that came from other places, you know what I mean? Because we're all American, you know, even us who came from countries in the south, we were also American, and we got our roots in our indigenous groups as well. So, the question for you would be, and it's not for you to answer right now, is how are you also including other kids that have indigenous roots in the curriculum that we develop? And maybe this is associated directly with word languages instead of all other areas, but how do we make sure that we are including all the kids that have an association with the American continent? Thank you.
Dr. Melby?
I am on the District Advisory Diversity Academic Committee, and I read very thoroughly all of the recommendations within the curriculum. And we were at the meeting, and I was very encouraged because there is so much in the arts within the, you know, the Dakota and the Ojibwe communities that we need to keep alive in this state. When I was a student, I felt like I got a very good, rich understanding of the Native American history in Minnesota. And I don't know where it went off the wheels, but I'm glad to see it come back, because it helps to understand what were the prairies like. It's called Eden Prairie. What does a prairie even look like? What happened on those prairies? What happened in early Bloomington? And I'm thankful that we have that. I'm also thankful that it's going to be something that the teachers are going to learn through the arts, the arts, the visual arts, the musical arts, the tangible arts that they made. And I would like to take some of these courses. I know that there are some books that were listed, and I thought, well, at least I can read some of those books. But I think we owe it to Minnesota to make sure that these are covered, and I'm very thankful that we have brought you in and that we have not just let this go by the wayside. We do have many cultures in our schools, but this is a very important one, too. So, thank you for coming, and thank you for what you're doing, and keep it up.
Thank you for your presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Next, I would like to invite Dr. Heistad to the podium to discuss teachers who beat the odds with English language learners.
My name is Dave Heistad. I'm the Executive Director for Research, Evaluation, and Assessment here in Bloomington. And we are really pleased today to bring to you video evidence and in-person testimony from three teachers that have produced exceptional growth with students who are English language learners. To my right is Julio Cesar, who is our psychometrician, who did the analysis. He'll tell you in layman's terms how he discovered these teachers. And then Lynn Morales, who's the Beat the Odds middle school teacher, will talk. And then Whitney and Kit, who are from Indian Mountains. And Lynn, you're from Valley View Middle School. And then Beth is going to be the cleanup hitter. So, right after Julio speaks, we'll show the six-minute video. Then we'll have each of the teachers kind of, from their own perspective, what is it that you did to have such a great effect on these students? And then we'll open it up to questions from the board. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Board. I'm going to briefly describe the statistical model that we utilize to identify the teachers that beat the odds. In order for us to look for exceptional teaching, especially with English language learners who benefited the most, like from these teachers that we have here today, we needed to use a statistical model that is fair. So, the idea of the Beat the Odds was to control for student demographic factors. So, the classrooms of the teachers that are here today were compared to classrooms just like theirs throughout the district in elementary and middle schools, respectively, becoming an apples-to-apples comparison. In these analyses, we controlled for things that teachers don't necessarily have control of, such as free and reduced language of the students, students' ethnic backgrounds, special education status, and their starting proficiencies, either in map or reading map scores. In Ms. Morales's and Ms. Dietermans' and Ms. Lowen's case, their performance was shown to be better than the district averages for the past three years. Furthermore, for Ms. Dietermans' and Ms. Lowen's performance during this past three years were the highest in the elementary classrooms in terms of mathematics and literacy for their English language learners. Similarly, Ms. Morales's performance was the highest in middle school classroom in terms of reading for English language learners. An exceptional outcome. So, let's give them a round of applause.
One of our greatest challenges as educators is to find the best way to instruct our students who speak English as a second language. In the state of Minnesota, around 8% of our student population is identified as English learners. In Bloomington, that percentage is around 13%. Both of those numbers have increased 300% in the past 20 years. It is one of our fastest-growing student populations.
Beat the Odds analysis is a study that we do to identify the most effective teachers. Then we find out what these Beat the Odds teachers do so that we can multiply the effectiveness of all teachers. This year, we looked at EL students.
When we analyzed the data, we found two classes with the highest value-added scores. Lynn Morales, an eighth-grade middle school teacher, and Kit and Whitney, who collaborate in a classroom of first graders. Looking at additional data, we also saw the sites of your schools were at are doing pretty well in comparison to other students in the state.
Our students do so well because it's a group effort here. All the intervention teachers and support staff are needed to ensure success for our students.
It's not what the EL teachers are doing, it's what the school comes together to teach the EL students.
Many people think you need to speak more than one language to instruct English learners. That's not true. What you really need to be able to do is use best practice. Best practice for English learners in language arts is really just best practice for all students. The one difference would be that while it's important for all students to have best practice, for English learners, it is non-negotiable. For students for whom English is their first language, content is difficult in any subject area. So, on top of that, you are trying to learn all of the rules of English and the content that makes it twice as hard for those kids. If someone is determined, what's another way of saying?
Some of those barriers are, you know, like common nouns, synonyms, unfamiliar language.
Letter placement, the I before E except after C, or idioms.
One time, I used the idiom, "Are you pulling my leg?", and I had six students look under the table.
Turn to your partner, share your feature, and why.
Best practices for language arts are giving students multiple opportunities to practice using language. They need to be able to talk about what they're learning, write about what they're learning, and have opportunities to read about what they're learning, in addition to having the vocabulary pointed out to them, the language structures pointed out to them, and plenty of visuals to make sure that they comprehend the subject. On the board, I always have visuals that show if we're talking about an author, maybe have the author's picture up there. When we're talking about characterization, have the pictures of the different characters up there.
We use dice a lot, and we customize them to meet the, for whatever learning target we're doing, so they can be question dice, they can be informational text feature dice, and it's really a way to engage the first graders. They want to roll the dice, they want to read what's on them, and then they want to share with their partners what they're doing.
We use a variety of manipulatives, such as matching cards to pictures, words. We use stuffed animals to help the students reenact some of the stories that we've been teaching.
You know, the EL teachers here have talked about and stressed is that students need to speak. I always say, reading out loud is a skill. Speaking out loud is a skill that everybody needs to have.
I'll say something, and then the students will say it back to me. For example, I said, "I learned", and then all the students will say, "I learned", and they'll attach a movement to it, like tapping their legs.
Just put your first and last name and period number three. Essays are a big part, and writing is a big part of the eighth-grade curriculum. For a student who is just learning vocabulary or just learning content, that's a near impossible role. So, some of the things that we have done to help with that is starting with sentence frames as their essay, and they are filling in the sentence frames, keep the expectation high that they still have to write, and help them understand that eventually the goal is to not have a frame, to write it on their own. is to not have a frame, to write it on their own. Assessment is really important for English learners because we always wanna challenge students to be learning just above their proficiency level so that they're gaining language as quickly as possible.
So, when students get stuck, they really take the time to collaborate and go back and look at the way we taught it and see how we can teach it differently. So, it's using different books, using different graphics, using different movements, really trying everything until they get it.
We're very proud that high numbers of our students graduate from the ESL program. We call that exiting. We have a huge percentage of our students that are very successful in that area.
Both the EL teacher and the classroom teacher are constantly doing check-ins with their students to make sure that they understand the learning target, as well as using the language that's required to meet the learning target. If a student doesn't make progress in the English Language Program and in their grade level content, then oftentimes, they have less motivation as they get older. And when they're in middle and high school, it is much more challenging to get them excited about learning. It's not an exaggeration to say that their futures are at stake.
My hope is that these Beat the Odds findings will encourage other teachers to use the type of effective strategies that were identified in this study. We want a good future for all of our students. And thank you to Martha Lo, who produced this video. Next, we're gonna hear from Lynn Morales.
You're gonna wanna cancel the video that's coming up next.
Oh, we got another one?
There you go.
Oh. Thank you. Okay Lynn, just in your own words, how'd you do it?
Well, everything I did is collaboration. I'm not an EL teacher, I'm a, a regular language arts teacher. So, everything I did has to do with the EL teachers, the staff at, at Valley View, best in line, my first boss, and the kids. It's all about the kids and keeping the expectations high for them and making them understand, this is where we want you to be. Therefore, you will work hard and we want you to use best practices to be the best that you can be. And I work with a, a great team, two of whom are here tonight, who have also helped collaborate and to make sure that all of our students are, are working at a high level, especially our EL students.
Next is Kit.
Hi, I'm Kit Lowen. I've taught for over thirty years in the district. And a funny thing, when I started, I learned that the teachers were not allowed to meet in the hallways before school. You had to go to your classrooms at eight o'clock and not talk to each other. We've come a long way since then. I was fortunate enough to work with Whitney and the first-grade team by doing a push-in model. At Indian Mounds, we have a push-in, pull-out, team teaching, co-teaching, different models that work with different groups of students in the school. So, Whitney and I would meet, meet weekly, and I knew exactly what she was teaching, and I'd pull out what I thought was important as a former classroom teacher of first graders. And I could do more of that in the classroom. And if I could say one word, it's stuff. I love stuff. And I guess the correct word is realia, but bring things where the kids can touch, feel, breathe, and, and have it be a part of them. And I think that's the big thing, to get that hook with those kids and have a talk of, talk with those kids and interact with the realia and the stuff. And I think that's really important.
Thanks, Kit.
Hi, my name's Whitney Dietermann, and I had taught with Kit at Indian Mounds First Grade for quite a few years. And I kinda echo what they're saying, that we just have high expectations for all of our students. And in first grade, I heard so many times, like, first graders can't do that, but they can. We just have to high, hold them to those high expectations and give them the tools they need. So, scaffold things, give them manipulatives, show them what we're talking about. If they don't understand something, think about other ways. How can we explain it better? What can we incorporate to help them learn? One thing I've really learned from working with Kit is to expect what our EL students or our first graders aren't going to know. And like they said in the video, what's best practice for EL students is really best practice for all students. So, just identifying those things and planning how we're going to teach it when they don't understand.
Thank you. And now the cleanup hitter, Beth.
I don't understand baseball. This is one of the best things I've, I've done, and I've been here for eighteen years, being able to watch the three of them teach last year. They are master teachers and they make it look easy, and it's not easy. It's, it's really challenging. So, the fact that they, they make it look so easy is kind of a testament to them. But Julio and I worked on looking at, you know, research-based best practices, and we were really able to identify those things in their classroom. Because it, it does just look like really good teaching, but it, it is something that is so critical for the success rates of our English learners. They really can't do well without the things that you saw in their classroom. And the only other thing I would say is that we wanna make sure that we get this out to as many people as possible. So, we are going to be embedding it into our EL professional development, and it's also gonna become an online class because many, many teachers do access our online classes when they're up for relicensure, and EL is one of the specific areas that they need to get relicensure in. But I would also add that all of the discourse and talking you saw in the class are goals and objectives that all of teaching and learning has. So, we're all working very closely together to make sure that happens in all classrooms. And thank you for having us tonight.
Thanks, Beth. Before we open up for questions, I'll just indicate that the, the short video that you just saw is on the YouTube site of Bloomington Public Schools. And there are two longer instructional videos that are being used in these, in-service training. So, now we'd be glad to have any questions that you might have for us.
First of all, congratulations. Thank you for coming. I would ask you if you could share the, sort of the special sauce that makes this all work, but you seem far too humble. So, what I wanna do instead is just ask one question, the same question of each of you. What, what gets you going in the morning? What, what makes you wanna come to work?
Oh, thanks. Students make me wanna come to work, knowing that I hope I can help them succeed. And at the end of each class period, they probably won't say that was cool, but they'll say, "Thank you" or "I got this" or "I understand".
I think it starts the night before, when I'm laying in bed going, "Oh, I could do that differently" or "I could, I could bring that in and, and get up in the morning and get something ready." I think the second thing would be the hugs that you get in the morning. I'm not shy about giving hugs to the kids, and so that sets it off in the morning.
For me, it's the same as the students, just waiting for them to finally get it and understand and seeing that light bulb go off, it makes it all worth it.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
I used to teach EL in Japan and also in Southern California. And I'm just so excited by your ideas. I wish I would've known you then, it would've helped me. I taught junior high school. And so, it, it takes a lot. It takes a teacher who's dedicated, and you've done it. And so, I would love to come visit your classes, if that's okay. Great, thanks.
Anyone else?
Chair, thank you for, for the work that you do and for the love that you put into it. You know, Beat the Odds, it's not only because of the academics, but it is also because you care and because of the relationship that you have with your students. There's obviously a relationship that has been established, you know? You matter, right? Because kids matter to you and they need to know that they matter, too. And obviously, you're making them feel that. So, that, that's great, and so I thank you for doing that for, for our students in Bloomington. When you talk about high expectations, you know, the, the importance of having those high expectations for all students, to keep remembering this as we continue the work that we all do, that we need to hold those high expectations because that really sets that, that big tone about, you know, for themselves even, about how far they can go and how good they can do in life, and that they're able to. And often, we have students, especially our EL students, that come with sometimes thinking that they cannot achieve, that they cannot go too far. So, it, it is very important to keep those expectations high. And with those expectations, then comes the responsibility, too, that we have of not only helping them along the way at the beginning, but keeping those, those, this responsibility and those high expectations all the way to the end, you know, until we get to the, the college and career stage as well, that we make sure that, that we continue to work together with them, that we don't forget towards the end, that we need to help them get to that path where they are successful beyond high school. So, thanks a lot for what you do and what you've done.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I don't have a question, I just wanted to also thank you. And your passion for the students obviously shows even here tonight when you talk about them. Also, I wanted to make sure that if you have not been recognized in your buildings, I know you're all very humble and maybe you don't want that, but I think it's important that your administrator in your building recognize all of you, to your peers in your building, for your outstanding work. So, if they haven't, maybe Jenna will make sure that they do.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Again, I just wanna reiterate and say, thank you for doing what you guys do, 'cause you guys are literally teaching our next generation, and that is something that's really incredible, especially as a student. And thank you for everything you guys do.
Thanks, Chair.
Well, you're hearing a lot of thank yous, I might have put mine in there, too. You know, I think you guys are clearly rock stars. And what I, watched that video, what I liked was the, the Rubik's Cube. I don't know if that was intentional, the motif of that, how, that's what language is, is unlocking the mysteries. So, I kinda liked the Rubik's Cube bit. It's pretty cool. And, you know, I think you guys, like I said, are rock stars, and you're a small sampling of what our, our wonderful teachers are doing here every day. But I'm glad that there's a large group here today, so they can see some of our, our best and brightest, 'cause you guys are truly, you know, are great teachers. I'm glad that they could all see that. And I, I wanna thank you for wearing the You Matter shirt. I love that shirt over at Valley View Middle School. I love going there and seeing staff and students wearing it. And it's, it's not just a slogan, it's something that, 'cause I, I have a student at Valley View, so I, I know that it's something that the school truly believes, and every kid there does matter, so it's great. And so, there's a question in here. My question is, when you were first told that you were the Beat the Odds teachers, was it a surprise or were you kinda like, "Yeah, yeah, we already knew that"? So, I don't know if you could just kind of share your experience when you were first told that you were Beat the Odds?
Total surprise. Just doing, just doing our job and, and, yeah, it was, it was a surprise. Are you sure we got it?
Trust, trust totally.
I agree, it was a, a complete surprise, and I was just proud of Indian Mounds because we have such a diverse population and there are great things happening at Indian Mounds. And I feel like this just highlights one of the small things at Indian Mounds, and that hopefully more people start to see what a wonderful school it is.
Oh, yes, sorry. Yes, surprise. Surprise for me personally, not for the school, for the great teachers that I teach with and that are at Valley View and my administration. That didn't surprise me at all.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you all for coming tonight. At this point, I'm going to digress for one second and ask if there's any students that are here from government classes. I neglected to, to do that earlier. If there are, would you come up to the podium and just tell me your, tell us your name and who your teacher is?
Hi.
Hello?
Hi, my name's Hamza, and I go to Jefferson High School, and my teacher's name is Sterling. So, I'm just here to watch you guys for the meeting.
There's agendas over there on the side table, and after one hour, which it's already after one hour, but stay as long as you'd like, and someone will sign your agendas so you can show Mr. Sterling you're here, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming. Anyone else? No? Okay. Good, I'm sorry, I forgot to do that earlier. All right, number three, approval and ratification of the 2019-21 negotiated contract between the Independent School District, number 271, and the Bloomington Federation of Teachers. And we have Brian Engeman and Rod Ziffkovich here to tell us about that. Would someone, please?
Excuse me. Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves and ratifies the 2019-2021 negotiated contract between the School District and the Bloomington Federation of Teachers.
Is there a second? Thank you.
Chair Baralata, Superintendent Fujitaki, School Board, and view and audience, I'm here to share some information regarding the background of the tenor agreement, tenor agreement of the teacher contract, the Bloomington Federation of Teachers for the 2019-2021 Master Contract. First off, I wanna introduce the negotiating teams. I know they're not all here, but we had sessions in the spring, we were able to get things through some long sessions of working together, a lot of collaboration, come to a tenor agreement that was wrapped up here this fall. But the teacher team included Jeff Bunkert, Lead Negotiator, Wendy Marchek, Union President, Liz Volbrecht, Josh Koval, Jessica Rice, Chris Tollison, and Eric Herman from Education Minnesota. On the district side was Eric Melby, former Assistant Superintendent, myself, Dick Bergstrom, School Board Member, Roberto Cantu, Principal, Poplar Bridge, Greg Mattson, Attorney, and Rod Ziffkovich. Just a few highlights here. The agreement includes salary and schedule improvements of two percent for the 2019-2020 school year, two percent for the 2020 and 2021 school year contracts and the salary schedule. In addition to that, the tenor agreement includes some information regarding increases to Schedule C and E of one percent each year, language clarifications for online credits and parent-teacher conferences. We modified language to recognize some workplace violence time off, adjusted the president's release time to a flat dollar amount to the unit. Previously agreed to auto-network, out-of-pocket maximums for health insurance, increases to district health insurance contributions and HSA for both years. And there was some MOU language around A-B choice study team, Schedule C, earned personal leave, and then regarding the Ed Specialist, Dr. Lane. So, a lot of work was done and able to work together in collaboration to bring forth a, a tenor agreement by the BFT. And so, we're happy for the process and the results.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
Sure. If I may. As the board rep on this particular negotiating team, I'd like to say thanks to both sides for the, the adult way the conversation went. There's some interesting conversations that happen at the table. They're not always, we don't always agree from one side of the table to the other, but it went, it went the way that it should, and I was really pleased with the conversation at the table and the people and the way they participated. I'm gonna share this once because there are a couple other contracts that are coming up tonight. My particular vote, even though we haven't asked for that vote yet, my particular vote will end up being no. I'm voting no because I think the, the percentage of the raise that's given isn't sustainable, especially when we're giving cuts. I, I can't rationalize one side versus the other. So, I believe that a no vote deserves at least an attempt at, at an explanation. Hopefully, I won't go, I won't go through this with the other contracts that are coming up. Those that are watching at home will understand why I'm voting no. It has to do with the sustainability of the, of the contracts and nothing else. There isn't any other language in here that I'm, that I'm voting no on. I don't have line item veto ability, so it's either yes or no. So, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to share.
Anyone else?
Yes, Madam Chair. Just like in previous years, you know, due to the fact that my husband is an educator in Bloomington schools, a teacher, I won't be voting tonight.
Anyone else? Hearing none, we'll go around the table. Director Beebe?
Yes.
Director Saar?
Aye.
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 No.
Yes.
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 Thank you. That will move us to the approval and ratification of the contract between Independent School District Number 271, Bloomington, Minnesota, and the Bloomington Principals Association. Would someone like to move that resolution?
Madam Chair. Please. Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 approves and ratifies the 2019-2021 master contract between Independent School District 271, Bloomington, Minnesota, and the Bloomington Principals Association.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Chair Barlata, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. This is a agreement between the Principals Association and the school district. As Brian mentioned with the teachers, I'd also like to mention the two groups that bargained this agreement. For the principals, Jeremy Clunes, Andrew Wilkins, Andy Vollmuth, and Jason Anderson from the district. Mary Burrows was the lead negotiator for the district. Jenna Mitchler, the assistant superintendent. Don Steigoff was the board member on it, and myself. This agreement, as you saw in the background and the information that we provided beforehand, it's very similar to what was in the teachers' agreement with insurance and deductibles and the rest. As you remember, we do a two-year before the timeframe with all the bargaining units. So we really clean up a lot of the health insurance and all those pieces upfront. So that pretty much gets done before negotiation process. The, the schedule improvements were similar as the teachers' contract of a two and two. We have an M O U to talk about comparison districts. And the only other thing with this change in this is that is a reduction of two non-contract days within their contract.
I mean, non-student contact days?
Yes.
Yes, you said two contract days.
Oh, sorry.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll start with Director Bennett.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Next, we have the superintendents' contract for 2018-2021 amendment. Would someone like, please, Director Saar?
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves a modification to the 2018-2021 superintendent contract with less Fujitaki by amending Article 8 of the contract to include, and the Article 8 is salary. The superintendent shall be paid an annual salary of $187,290 for the 2019-2020 contract year and an annual salary of $191,036 for the 2021 contract year. The school board retains the right to modify the annual salary of the superintendent for the remaining school years, provided that such salary adjustments shall not reduce the annual salary below the figure stated in this paragraph. The salary will be paid in 24 equal installments during the contract year.
Second.
Thank you. Does anybody have any comments?
Well, maybe I can just provide the detailed background. You know, we have done the evaluation and the school board has the right to modify the annual salary and recommended, the school board recommended that the parties have agreed to a 2% increase in salary for the 2019-2020 school year and a 2% increase for the 2021 school year, similar to the previous two contracts that we had approved.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything? Hearing none, we'll start with Director Beebe.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
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 Thank you. That brings us to the proposed 2019 payable 2020 property tax levy. Would someone like to agree that resolution?
Chief. Come ahead. Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves a property tax levy for the proposed 2019 payable 2020 levy of $61,151,903. Be it further resolved that in the event of any changes to levy amounts by the Minnesota Department of Education, it is, it is the intent of the School Board of Independent School District 271 to level the appropriate amount as allowed by law. The state requires that the districts use the term maximum on the certification sheet to allow these corrections to the levy.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Thank you. Our executive director of finance, Rod Zepkovich, is back to talk about this one.
This is the, really the start of budgeting for the 2021 school year. We just started one school year and we're moving into another one. So that's, the levy kind of starts that process. So the overall tonight is to prepare the school board to make an informed decision about the levy certification. The board action tonight is to approve the preliminary. Following this, there'll be a review of truth and taxation and then the preliminary 2020 levy information. If you look at the overall truth and taxation process, it starts off at the beginning of this year where the board approves a preliminary levy. That information is sent into the county and the state and then property tax statements are, are sent out to the public. The public has the availability to look at those statements and then coming back in December has the, can come to the board as our final levy presentation to be able to have public comment at that point in time. Then, once that is, that is approved by the board in the final in December, actual property statements are sent out after the first of the year. So on September 6th, the state sends out a first information of data based on information that the school district and the county has provided them. Tonight, it's the board looking to certify the preliminary. That has to be sent into both the Minnesota Department of Education and both Hennepin and Scott County. A lot of people don't realize that we have a little corner of our district in Scott County. Then the counties do the truth and taxation, mail in November, and then the final in, on December 9th. So if we look at the overall, what the levy is set up as, there's five major categories. There's operating referendum, that's what technically the voter-approved operating referendum. Referendum other, which is equity, which is the kind of, the calculation of the differences within a region of revenue of the districts. Community services, our debt service, our bonds and interest payments, and then all others. And as you read in the resolution, the board has a choice of either going with the maximum or something less than that maximum. So if we look at the referendum itself, last year in P-19, the overall referendum levy was at $19,721,000. This year it's up to $20,441 or an increase of $720,000. The majority of that increase is, if you remember, when we went out for voter-approved levy, we have an inflationary factor built in that operating referendum. The second area here is our equity levy. And again, it's, it's more tied to between the years and in your enrollment. We show that our enrollment is going down slightly, that's why you see the drop in both the equity, the local tier one and the local tier two. Then you have the prior year adjustments. A lot of times because we're doing a, a projection 18 months before the end of the year, there's a lot of adjustments that are going on from year to year to year on these levies and all the different categories. And so that's where you have difference. So last year we saw the benefit of a negative $49,000. This year it's a positive $184,000 adjustment. So showing the overall net increase is $206,000. If you look at community services, overall, it's pretty flat between the two-year period of time. We're up a little bit on the basic revenue and down a little bit on the adjustment. We go to debt service. Debt service is up on our actual payments. Principal and interest, up $1.1 million. The majority of that increase is due to last year we did some refinancing and we took all of the benefit of the refinancing in the P-19 year versus spreading it out over multiple years. So looking at the overall, it's up $1.1 million. If we look at our, kind of look at everything all together here, referendum is going up to $720,000 or 3.7%. Referendum other, 2.3%. Community services is down slightly. Debt service is up 7.1. Our other is, is flat at zero. So our overall is going up 1.7 million or 2.9%. Kind of take a look at this comparison here between, between years of kind of the operating referendum, so those, kind of those two top categories of the operating referendum, equity, that's going up 926,000. Then our non-referendum items, so our debt service and the rest is going up, that area of going up $819,000. Just kind of a different way to looking at the two, two different categories. We then work with the city and the county very closely to get a look of what, how this affects the average taxpayer on a median-sized home. You can see from 19 to 2020, the, the value of a home, of a median-sized home went up $27,000 or 10.5%. With what the city, county, and school taxes all combined, the projected increase with all is a 10.3%. The increase that we have proposed is up $79 or at 7.8% increase. So tonight, looking for the board for the certification of the preliminary levy. Once that is approved, we submit it to the state and the county by September 30th. And then the board, the, the choice with the board is the maximum. Part of the reason of doing that also is once you levy a certain dollar amount within the district, we can't go back in December and have something else or something higher than what we have currently. We can go lower, but we can't go higher. So they give us the ability to do maximum in case there's a lot of calculations still going on behind the scenes at the state to come up with the final number. And then the final levy, as mentioned before, on December 9th. Questions?
Director Beebe?
I had a question about levy. And based on our enrollment, did our enrollment go down this year?
We showed a slight, slight decline.
Oh, okay. I thought I'd heard that it had gone up, so I was surprised at that, but I didn't know what the actual was.
Again, this is projecting for the 2021 school year.
Oh, 2021 school year, got it. Okay. Projecting down.
We're kind of, we're looking at it, we're, we're fairly flat. Current year to, last year to the year that we're in right now is fairly flat, looking at next year to a slight drop.
Okay, anyone else? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to a designation of an identified official with authority for education identity access management. Would someone like to move that resolution? Please.
Result that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approaches the designation of the administrative assistant to the executive director of research evaluation and assessment as the identified official with authority for education identity access management, E D I A M, with the Minnesota Department of Education, M D E, with authority to assign job duties and authorize external user access for M D E secure systems for Independent School District 271, Bloomington Public Schools. Appropriate approvals will be directed by the executive director of research evaluation and assessment.
Second. Thank you. Do you want to address it? Thank you.
Thank you. We'll try to explain all that. The state requires each district to identify a person, and that person's title is identified official with authority, also known as Iowa, to use, and that person will have access and authority to access the state's education identity, identity access management system. Okay, Dr. Heistad recommends that his administrative assistant in the R E A department, the research evaluation assessment department, be designated as that official.
Any questions?
Is that really complicated? With all those acronyms and some of the things like that, I suppose I should ask David, how many meetings will she have to attend?
He's coming.
I mean, it sounds wonderful and, and responsible and, and helpful, but it's...
This new system, they're just rolling out the training now, but Kathy saw it online and went through the whole training before they got the information out. It is very time-consuming, however, to change the access for everybody and certify it, so it's, it's a lot of detail work and she's very good at that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you.
Just to get that name tag across her desk is going to be expensive.
Just going to use acronym Iowa.
All right. Board member reports. Director Saar?
I'll start off. We had our first community education advisory committee meeting and it was really a good session because all the program directors were there, since we don't have the community ed executive directors. So we, they all came and made their presentations about all the summer programs. And they were all very successful in the summertime. They were all full and new attendance records set and some of the things. Now, a video is available to see that I suppose I'll have to talk to Dev to see if we can schedule it sometime to see, but of all the different programs that, that community ed does, and some of them in conjunction with the city, but it was just a tremendous, tremendous program to see so many summer programs and so many students and are participating in it, so. That's all.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Chair. All right, I thought maybe I'd just focus on one event this evening and, and give it a little bit extra love. This afternoon, I had the best fish sandwich I've had all day.
Why? What?
Yeah, but I'll, I'll repeat that. It was the best fish sandwich that I've had all day long. I was over at Westwood and had lunch today and I, I came a little bit late, so I, I was able to sit with the second graders and some of the third graders. And with the second graders, among other things, we were talking about the, the calories in the milk cartons. And I happen to have skim and skim, I understand, has 90 calories. The young man sitting across from me had 1%, that has 110 calories. And the young man sitting next to me had chocolate, which of course was a perennial favorite, and that has 130 calories. And I asked the young lady next to me, I said, what do you like best about school so far? And she said math and reading. And I said, well, let's do a little math. And so we took our 90, 110, and 130, and I asked which was greater and which was less? And every single one of the students got it right. And then we talked about why the, why one of them had more calories than the other. And so they were able to pick those little tiny little milk cartons up and they were able to read the ingredients and go down, what's this, what's this, what's this? What's this? What's this?" And the young man who had chocolate milk said, "I know why mine has more, because there's more sugar in there." And, and then the, the young lady across the table said, "Well, that's what makes it taste good." So we had a wonderful, robust conversation. All the while, I was trying to eat this fantastic fish sandwich. I managed to sit with a third grade class, and it was interesting because the preferred seats at the table were already taken over here, and there was one young lady who was sitting all by herself with a, with an empty seat on the end, and so I asked if I could sit there. And she said, "Sure." And I said, "How come you're sitting alone?" And she said, "All the good seats are taken over there, and I don't want to sit down there with all those boys." So I said, "Well, that's a, that's a good thing, because I'm not one of the boys." But we had a conversation, and she said that her, her teacher was the best teacher she's had so far. And I said, "What's your teacher's name?" And she said, "Ms. Bennett." And so if there's a Ms. Bennett listening in tonight, you have a teacher that says that, a student that says, "You're her best teacher." The particular, particular conversations that I enjoy so much are asking one question and getting 500 answers, and just sort of getting immersed in what the students are learning. And it, it's really is a testament to what the district does, what the, the individual teachers do, to what the support staff does, to make those students happy and, and as well-fed as they could be. Not all of them were eating a chicken sandwich, some of them had pizza, I'm sorry, a fish sandwich. Which lends me into the next bit of this information. I know that each, each campus that we have, we have 19 different campuses, they're all looking for different individuals to volunteer. The best way to find out how you can volunteer, what kind of time is available, really would be to talk to that front office. Just call up the front, the main number at any one of the campuses, and then I'm, I'm including transportation, I don't know if they, they need volunteers, but maybe they be, maybe they just want someone to talk to. Call them up and ask. You know, it's early in the year, the schools are looking for lunch servers, you can be a reader, you can be a math helper, you can just come and greet people when they come into the building in the morning. It doesn't have to take a lot of time, and I think that you'll get a lot out of it, as I do, having lunch with the second graders and the third graders, and we, we do our calorie counting. So for one particular topic, I think I used a bunch of time tonight. Thank you.
Director Bennett?
To follow the fish sandwich story, let's say, last week, I had the chance to eat, well, serve school lunch, but also enjoy the, the meatball sandwich. What I, what I have to say outside of Devonny's is the best meatball sandwich you can get in Bloomington. And it could be yours for a little, little cost of free if you volunteer to serve lunch. So anyway, just that little plug. But back on track. So as we talked about earlier, we had the BSAC meeting beforehand, and, and Ally and, and Shante did a great job running that, but I also want to thank Dr. Mitchler, who came, and she led the, the group in a, an activity on, on bullying and our discipline procedures. And it was interesting, she was doing activities and having them explain some things that they would like to see different in our, the way we handle discipline. And one of the individuals I was sharing was talking about how it needs to be more equitable, and it was interesting, because they just defined implicit bias without using the term implicit bias. And I thought that was pretty interesting, that they, that they're seeing that as well. So thanks for, Dr. Mitchler, for coming for, for that activity. And also just a little plug, this Friday is Valley View Elementary, is their, they do a fall carnival. So I know we're all used to spring carnivals, so if any of you guys are available to come and check out their carnival and support that, they're also always looking for volunteers to help staff some of their activities. So you can go on their Facebook page, the Valley View Elementary PTA Facebook page, and you can sign up for any shifts that you can work. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Director Beebe? Go ahead.
I attended the volleyball game over at Jefferson, and I tell you, that is one high-energy game, game and high-playing team. And so just if you get a chance, get over there and see some pretty, pretty fast balls flying. The other thing, I was at the Bloomington Heritage Days Parade, and thank you, Dick, for your coordination of that. Wasn't able to walk in the parade, but did see our team from the district handing out books. Maureen was there, Don was there, Tom was there, Nellie was there. And, and Dick, I didn't see you, but I knew you were there, so.
Tried to hide off to the side, and I'm just glad that the thing goes.
Yeah. And I have bum knee, so I sat and I interacted with some families and heard some really good things about our schools and about how some special needs kids were being served. And so it was really fun to be in the community and listen and be a part of that, and, you know, be able to, to listen to, to parents. I think that's really important in our job. Was also at the football game a couple weeks ago, when we had the Hall of Fame inductees at Jefferson High School. And some of our athletes have gone very far and have invested well with their gifts and skills, so that was great. I wasn't able to get to the Kennedy one, I don't know if anybody else did, but, you know, they are deserving as well, so. And with homecoming this week, I'll be at the football game, sorry. That's part of what I do, so, thank you.
Just really quickly, I can touch on the parade, and I have a couple things from school, but I just wanted to thank the Education Foundation for the work that they did, not only, you know, getting all those books donated, but the work they did sorting them and organizing them before we got there, and then the BFT was there with us to, way more BFT than, than the few of us, to hand out the books. But really, the work was done by the Education Foundation members that, and then took two van loads to get there, they had to drop them off and go get another load, and I think Director Corman and I were in charge of covering them up if it rained while they were gone. So, but that, that's a lot of work for them to lift all those books and carry two loads of, van loads of books and sort them all. So just thank you so much, because people were so appreciative when we handed them books. I have many people that did not have children that were coming, I mean, did not have children with them, that kept coming up and requesting, "Can I have books too?" So I think that's something for us to remember, it's not just the children that like the books, so. Couple things about school, I had a chance to visit in a classroom during, I guess, what they would call free choice time, and elementary classroom, and a student had created something that she was showing the teacher, and the teacher said, "Would you like to take a picture so you can show it to your family?" And so they, she, the student went and got the iPad, took a picture, and then they loaded into, I think it's CSO. And then, then the teacher approved, I don't know, maybe it's not CSO, I don't know, anyway, is it? Okay. The teacher approved it after she showed me how she could approve it, and then that went off to the child's parent while she was at school yet that day. And then they told me that earlier that day, the child had sent something else to her mother, and her mother was even able to not just send a verbal, or a written response, but she got an audio response from, from her mother during the day. And so I thought, you know, this is one of the things that people wonder how the technology's being used, and what a great example of that. So she was able to share that with her family. And then I also went to visit some of our teachers doing the new elementary computer science program, and had a conversation with them about it, but I have to say, the best part of that conversation was similar to the teachers, the beat-the-odds teachers we saw this evening, when I asked a little bit about it, and she told me that the students were so excited and so interested in it, and her face just like lit up when she said, "Oh, and the students are so excited for it and really enjoying it." So that was great to see. Thank you.
No?
Yes. Thank you. Ah, let's see, let's start with the, the parade. So just very happy to be able to walk along with the Bloomington Federation of Teachers and the Bloomington Education Foundation, you know, giving those books to the children and the community. It was a wonderful experience, as always, to have that interaction with the people of Bloomington, as well with seeing the, the happy faces of the kids as they were receiving those books, you know, and how eager many of them were to, to really get a book, you know, that's, it was just as good as getting candy, it seemed like. And then I attended both the past football games, the Kennedy one and the Jefferson one, really, really enjoyed them. Enjoyed spending some time with the, with the Eagles and with the Jaguars. And our meeting today with our board student advisory committee, just to see the energy of our students, you know, the, the great ideas that you guys bring and, and your other classmates bringing to, you know, to the attention of the board. And I really love how they are embracing the concept of the One Bloomington. I, I really, really enjoyed listening to those conversations that you guys were having, and it's, you know, you don't have to sell them the idea at all, they already got it in. And so it's just amazing to see how you guys talk about it and how you're thinking about how you can share that same embracement of, embracing of the, of who we are as a community, and how both of the schools are great schools, and how we can have our students working together and being proud of both schools, not just one. And what else? Let's see. So this weekend, this Thursday, I'll be traveling to Chicago to attend the National Association of Latino Elected Officials, National Policy Institute and School Governance, so where I'll be learning a little bit more about the state of our Latino students in the country, so I'm looking forward to that, to hear some of the, the data and information they have for us this year. They're going to be talking to us about governing roles and responsibilities, and preparing schools and communities for the 2020 census, so that, that is like a conversation that we, we have, we need to have soon. And then just in general fiscal responsibilities, so probably will tell you a little bit more when I come back. Thank you.
And I just want to take this opportunity to thank everybody for, I'm on the Education Foundation Board also, and thank you, BFT, we would have never gotten those books out. There were so many books. I think we have five or six boxes left to save up for next year. So, and we did give out a ton of books, so thank you for that. Superintendent?
Thank you. I have two topics. First is the MDE Commissioner Ricker established a school finance working group. I accepted her invitation to be a member. The other members, about 30 of them, are legislators, board members, superintendents, business managers, teachers, principals, and a state PTSA representative. So we're going to be meeting monthly, and the goal is to improve and simplify the school finance system.
Huh.
Bow. Okay. So the next is a request for a motion to establish three school board professional development sessions for equity conversations with Dr. Jenna Mitchler. The dates of those day, sessions are January 13th, 2020, March 9th, 2020, and May 11th, 2020. And the times will be between 5:30 to 6:45 PM. Have a motion, please.
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor of professional development sessions on January 13th, March 9th, and May 11th, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Good. I conclude my report.
Thank you. Is there anything else coming for the board this evening? Please.
I would like to just say that personally, I sympathize and I stand in solidarity with the Operation Adventure program, and I've seen the impact it's had on our students and myself included, and I love the program, and I wish with everything that I have to see it continue. Thank you.
Anything else?
Madam Chair? I also second what Ally just said, being that I have been two years, and I actually, this would have been my third year this year, until I learned the devastating news. It touched me personally, because I actually went as a chaperone this last year with a bunch of the middle schoolers, and it was actually pretty fun, because I, we really got to connect with these kids, and seeing like them get out and like actually meet people that they've never met before, and like actually connecting with kids from different schools, I thought that was really important to the community especially, because that's exactly, the first year of my trip to Operation Adventure, that's exactly how I met some of the amazing kids at Kennedy. And actually, this last year, there was a child eating by himself during dinnertime by his tent, and the group of high schoolers who I went with herded him over, and we soon realized that he actually was on the spectrum, and he was very closed off, very reserved when we first started talking to him. And once we included him and invited him into our group, he flourished, he was doing things that he said he'd never done before. He was completely, as the teachers were saying, out of character, and it was just a really beautiful thing. And he had even said that this was a highlight of his summer. And just to think that, that is, could be taken away from kids in the future is really devastating and kind of hard to hear, so again, I just wanted to share my experiences. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anything else? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.